Bringing this meeting to order. This is the Morgantown City Council regular meeting. It's Tuesday, September twentieth at seven fifteen. We're in Mon County Commission Chambers at two forty-three High Street. And I would like it if the clerk would please call the rule.
Yes, Joe Bugan.
Present.
Bill Kulecki.
Here.
Yixia Vega.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trumble.
Here.
Dave Harchbacher.
Here.
Brian Butcher.
Here.
Mayor Celine.
Here.
And we're gonna give the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have some minutes. So the minutes that we have for this evening are August thirtieth, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, September sixth, twenty twenty-two Legislative Session Meeting Minutes, September sixth, twenty twenty-two Regular Meeting Minutes. If there are any additions or corrections, please let the clerk know. And otherwise, if everyone would just sort of indicate that. Green to the minutes. And then we're gonna move on to correspondence. At the beginning of correspondence, we have a, Eve Fox and Susan Eason. Would you come up, please? They're here to talk about an exhibit that's being shown at our library.
Yes, hi, I'm Susan Eason. I'm a resident of the city of Morgantown, and I'm here with Eve Fox. And we wanted to let the city council know about an exhibit that is going on called Listening for Racial Understanding. Some of the city council members I recognize were there at the art opening on September ninth. The exhibit continues at the library. Thankful, we wanna thank the library for hosting the exhibit. And it continues there through September thirtieth, where we will have a closing event. So I'm gonna let Eve tell a little bit about what is there at the library that you can come down and visit and see.
And again, I.
I have a microphone.
Oh. So again, thanks for those of you who've gone. And if you went, you kind of understand that you probably have to go back again because there's so much to read there that you probably want to. In addition, if you come to the closing event, which will be six to eight, September thirtieth again, and it will invite people who participated to speak and talk about their experience. But probably, and for people watching this on TV tonight, you would need to come back probably and plan to spend some time with it. And the process we went through to do this, the top piece here is an ad some of you might have seen in the paper when we put it in to invite people to participate in this. We had forty-six people agree to participate, paired up people of color with white people for the reason that personal experience, like a one-on-one conversation, is different and might change minds more than the stereotypes or what you watch on TV or your other kinds of social media. So we wanted to try this out as experiment, and it garnered some really wonderful conversations, some of the excerpts of which are on QR codes next to the artwork. We paired an artist. We again tried to get like fifty-fifty artists of color with white artists to interpret some of these conversations. And so the whole experience has been one that we would love to see people repeat. We haven't, we haven't seen something that is a red flag or anything. So we're going to not only have it up. And the library ended up being a very nice venue, very accessible to the public, and we'll probably try to do that in other cities. We're trying to make this travel West Virginia. We already have a venue in Lewisburg. It will be part of Diversity Week on the fourteenth of October. And it looks like we'll get one in Beckley and Charleston, Charleston probably during Black History Month. And so we're hoping we can get people to see it or repeat it or make a difference. And we bring it to the city council because we think this is another effort to live into our resolution, you know, of being a welcoming community. So does anyone have questions?
Would you turn that around so that people can see kind of what you have?
Oh, yeah. Because it's not really about the square. I just.
This is an example of the art pieces. And this is the ad that was placed. This is some of the people who were at the art opening, visiting.
Over eighty people were counted in the room at one time. So that's the reason you might need to come back too. You might not have seen everything. And I guess one other thing I could say about the technique we use that I think is something we, as we get copied, we want people to realize is that we gave prompts to people. It's not really questions, it was questions, but you, anything it made you say was, would be worthwhile. And the person partnered with you was supposed to repeat it back verbatim so they didn't have to think about what, what to say back. And then once trust had been established, we found that then some other conversation could be open past that. So it just, it worked out beautifully. And we're happy to be.
Very interesting. Six, six prompts were given to folks about maybe where they grew up, who was an important adult in their life, when they felt heard by another race.
When they were afraid.
When they were afraid. And really what stood out for them in the conversation. So we hope people will take time to go down and visit it.
Mayor, a quick question.
Yes, please.
Well, I was curious if this was a program that you all developed or if this was a program that you found somewhere else and brought to Morgantown.
It's kind of a compilation of different things. Some of you probably know about StoryCorps, you know, which is sort of a model, except I don't think they give prompts. They just let people come with their stories. The art piece is something Susan thought of, and that, that made it go from a quick one to a longer one.
It took us a year to put the whole project together.
Almost since January.
Yeah, about, yes. We started in December. And then the conversation, the impetus for it began from a conversation that Eve had with a ninety-eight-year-old resident of Scotts Run who said, I just wish I could sit down and talk with someone of another color who's different from me and understand what they think about me as a black woman. And so that kind of sparked our conversation. I sent Eve an email, why don't we try something? She came back with a whole way to do it.
Yeah.
And we.
The active listening thing is practiced in, in social work and in my field of graphic design. So we were trying to do it right.
So we've written it down, and we hope to make the process available to other communities as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we have the Urban Deer Archery Hunt twenty twenty-two. And a familiar face. Assistant Coordinator Rick, Rick Beba.
Yes, thank you. I'm Rick Beba. I live in the Norwood neighborhood. I was asked to come tonight to provide an overview of our twenty twenty-two season. So I have some numbers for you. Our season started on Saturday, September third, and it'll run through December thirty-first. It'll be closed for about eight or nine days. It'll reopen January ninth and run through the end of January. In twenty twenty-two, we have eighty-seven hunters participating, men and women. Ten of those hunters are new hunters that were taken off of our waitlist. And I think that left about eight or ten hunters on our existing waitlist. Those hunters are hunting forty properties, a mix of public and private properties across the city. And so far, we've taken twenty-five deer. Fourteen of those deer have been donated to our food bank program. And I anticipate we'll probably make our first donation, probably another two weeks, we'll be ready to collect that and distribute that across the community. But really straightforward, looking for another safe and positive season. We've made some inroads in some tough places to crack. Those of you that represent the Suncrest area know that it's a difficult area, but we're working with a new private landowner there and a piece of mub property. And I think we'll have an immediate impact in some of that part of Suncrest. Any questions?
What were the numbers last year? I'm just trying to see if it's in here.
Last year, I don't have my numbers last year, but I can tell you last year we exceeded the ten thousand pound mark of donated meat. And I wanna say we harvested probably eighty-one to eighty-five deer. I didn't bring, I apologize, I didn't bring my twenty twenty-one numbers.
Any other questions?
All right. If you have any backup.
Really appreciate all your hard work
Thank you.
and continued service.
Yeah, we'll be back in February to give you a postseason wrap-up. All right. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Now we're down to our Arbor Day proclamation. Dave Barnett, Donna Foster, and Dan Brown. So we haven't figured out how to do this here exactly.
I don't know.
Usually I come down and we do something.
Yeah, in the past, I think. Well, we were in city council.
You'll have to share the microphone.
We'll have to figure it out.
I don't have much to say, so.
All right. Whereas, there's a bunch of whereas's, huh? Proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas the legislature of the state of West Virginia has adopted an act designating Arbor Day, and by that act has designated the second Friday of every April as the state Arbor Day. And whereas the city of Morgantown will celebrate Arbor Day on October first, twenty twenty-two, to take advantage of the fall weather, which is an excellent time to plant trees. The shorter days and mild temperatures are less stressful and ensure a greater survival rate on newly planted trees. And whereas it is the purpose of the designation of this day throughout the nation to encourage the planting of shade and forest trees, to encourage the protection of our forests from a scourge of devastating insects, diseases, and fires that destroy the beauty and usefulness of our woodlands, parks, and street trees, as well as their wildlife. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in the city of Morgantown increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas Saturday, October first, twenty twenty-two, the city of Morgantown will be celebrating Arbor Day and their twenty-fifth year as a Tree City USA. Yay! Now therefore, I, Jenny Celine, Mayor of the city of Morgantown, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October first, as Arbor Day in the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect and enhance our trees throughout the city. Furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote well-being of this and future generations. And I love it.
Thank you very much.
So thank you all.
I'm on the communications committee. May I take a photo with you as a pro proclamation?
Please, please.
Just one moment.
Can I have these guys with me?
Yes. And I will be sure I work with Andrew Stacy to get it in our, the Morgantown newsletter. Just give me a moment. I have to log in.
You can use mine.
Yeah, I have mine.
So on Arbor Day, what will happen is we will all meet at the Farmers Market Shelter.
Yeah, about nine o'clock.
At the Morgantown marketplace.
Yeah, most of the trees this year are gonna go out in Suncrest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll plant them there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I go on to my, thank you.
Yes. Yes, you need to get into it.
Oh, I need to comment as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And then, um, then we go into the neighborhoods and people can help plant trees.
Yep, they can help if they would like.
So that's where we start.
You're starting.
So if you have any other comments, if you make them into the microphone,
Okay.
then they appreciate that.
I think enough was said. We'll see everybody October first down at the Farmers Market at nine AM. Look forward to seeing everybody. And if you can't make it, take some time. Go plant a tree in your own yard somewhere. So thank you all for your support. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to just add that we just recently, the Morgantown Tree Board just recently put a little article in the new, the newsletter for our website in Morgantown. And it's about the fall color of red maples. So be on the lookout for it. It's a nice little article, and it's very autumnish. Okay? Thanks.
Great, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you all. So now we would like to call up the West Virginia, yes, West Virginia Council of International Programs Day proclamation. And that would be Deanna Epps, Sandra Dixon, Paula Martinelli, and I don't see George.
George has absent tonight.
George has been, George has been very helpful over time. And I guess I will come down and we will. So getting used to this building, we don't like doing this. So I guess this. Maybe sounds. And then when we're done, if you guys have comments, turn it around and you guys can make comments. So whereas international education is one process by which people of one country became famili, become familiar with people of another country and share their values, traditions, and cultures. And whereas the achievement of the goal of cultural exchange requires the patience and heartfelt interests of everyone involved, the hosts and the guests in sharing their dreams, hopes, and ideas. And whereas the study of foreign language, languages and different cultures provides an immediate bridge to international understanding and cooperation. Whereas the study of languages of different world regions fosters greater communication, understanding, and appreciation of people from diverse cultures. Whereas the city, pardon me, whereas the West Virginia Council of Programs, Board of Directors, and Volunteers based in Morgantown, West Virginia, continue to bridge the hundreds of miles that separate the people of the United States with many other countries and regions of the world. Whereas the West Virginia Council of Programs has continued to successfully advance their mission of development and intercultural experiences for professionals over the course of fifty years. Now therefore, I, Jenny Celine, Mayor of the city of Morgantown, on behalf of city council, do hereby proclaim the twenty-first day of September twenty twenty-two as West Virginia Council of International Programs Day in the city of Morgantown, and offer thanks and appreciation to those visiting CIP professionals who came to our city, the host, the local host families, the placement agencies, and the CIP's Volunteer Board of Directors, for they truly are the world's cultural ambassadors. So we would like to hand this to you all. I don't know how you would like to do this, but thank you. There you go. Can we take a picture or all? Yes, yes. That's what we should do. Okay? And you should, you should get in here and we should have somebody else take a picture, if that works. Yeah. You didn't know you were gonna be pressed into service? All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Should not be shaking hands. But here we are. I really appreciate you coming. And if you all have remarks to make, please take this moment to make them. This is a great program. It's a great program. Yes. The West Virginia Council of International Programs is a fifty-two-year-old program now. It is a hosting and work placement program. So we bring professionals from all over the world to Morgantown to work in placements, internships. They are unpaid internships, but we provide pretty much for all their needs while they're here. And they are exposed to the Morgantown area and to many families in the area. They are hosted usually by about three families throughout their stay. And we've probably hosted, I should have the exact number, but hundreds and hundreds over the last fifty years of individuals from, like I said, all over the world. I myself have hosted for twenty years. I'm the president of the board. And Sandra Dixon has been a longtime board member. And Deanna Epps is our program coordinator. We actually are affiliated with West Virginia University Global Affairs. We used to work as more of a community board and community program where we were working in collaboration with them. And it became very advantageous to work directly with Global Affairs. And so anybody in the community can participate as a host or a friend of CIP, a volunteer, and come to some of our events. And we invite you all. We are planning a welcome event on next Wednesday, September twenty-eighth. And we can provide the council more information, but we would invite you to attend. We're hoping to have it up at Dorsey's Knob. And welcome, we have two placements this year. Teresa from Germany is a social worker. And Gabriella is from Brazil and is working up at the Davis College with agency placement there as well. So thank you for having us and for the proclamation. See ya. Thank you all for all your hard work. Sure. Takes a lot of persistence to keep a program like that going. So we do not have any public hearings, and we do not have any unfinished business. And pardon? Boards and commissions. Oh, pardon me. We do have boards and commissions, pardon me. We certainly do. So are there any nominations for boards and commissions?
Mayor, I would like to nominate Larissa Kason for the personnel board.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
All right.
And then do we have any other?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Ron Delaney to the Fairmont Morgantown Housing Authority.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? All right. So those two have been nominated and confirmed. And now we are to the public portion, which shall be subject to the rules established by council and adopted by resolution. Do we have? Did not see the names. If you did not happen to sign in, you still have an opportunity at the end to speak. So the first person is Deborah Gorday.
Good evening, council. I want to thank you again for allowing me to come and speak. My comments tonight are basically directed to Councilor Butcher. He stated in the last council meeting that he was disturbed that I was following the city manager. Well, I too am disturbed. However, I'm disturbed and highly offended that he would characterize me as a stalker. At no time did I ever interfere or hinder the city manager with performing his duties as a city manager in Morgantown. I do have some comments for the city manager, and I'll save them till the next city council meeting. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Please. If you would state your name and address.
Brian Karchaba. I live in Sheet Lake on King's Road. I'm a lifelong resident of Morgantown. I operate and do business in the city of Morgantown. And I've used, and my family's used, the public library forever. We, we use the, the outlying libraries more than we do the downtown libraries. And, you know, there's always been an element downtown since I was a kid that you had to just kind of watch out for. But I was surprised when I went down here recently. It's really, it's to the point I don't feel comfortable bringing my children down to the library anymore. And I've kind of stayed out of city affairs or public affairs for a number of years, but that was enough to spark me to come down and just voice my concerns. I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, however it's resolved, I'm happy to see it be resolved. But I'm not the only person that feels this way. In fact, when I voiced it a couple times, other folks have said the same thing, that they feel very uncomfortable coming downtown now. And so I just mentioned it to you all because I know that you have a better feel for what's going on because you're probably hearing concerns like that and you're down here more often than I am. But, you know, I don't have much to say other than my family doesn't feel safe coming downtown like they used to. That's all.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, we're gonna close the public portion. We have a special, special committee reports, and that committee has not been meeting because there have been some other committees that have started up. And now we are on the consent agenda. There is not, nothing there. So we are to new business. Consideration of approval, of approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three city council meeting calendar. I don't know if there's any kind of comment about the meeting calendar from administration?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to introduce that. The clerk may be more appropriate. The city council does approve in advance a meeting calendar setting the expected dates for the, the meetings for the upcoming year. But there's not much more to say about it than that as far as I'm concerned.
And I didn't know if the clerk had anything else to say on that. It's a calendar. Did any council member have any concerns or? um, concerns or questions about the calendar?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the calendars presented. Second?
Thank you. Yes.
It's a calendar.
It's a calendar. Alright. Um, if the clerk would please call the roll on the calendar.
Joe Bugon? Bill Kuecky?
Yes.
Ixia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Consideration of approval of mountain line sponsorship for Hazel's House of Hope. Um, that's um, the paying for a certain bus route that services the mountain line, um, the mountain line service that goes there from the downtown. And if there's anything else from administration on that?
Uh, I have, I have nothing to add to that.
Mayor, you, you may understand, this is, in your packet is simply an invoice for, for funding for that line. This is uh, an addition to ordinary bus service that provides regular service to uh, to Hazel's House of Hope to ensure people can get to and, and from the services provided there. I think there are uh, multiple other funding partners uh, participating in this request to assist the mountain line with, with operating that line. And the recommendation from city administration is that council approve the request. If there's any budgetary action needed, we'll talk to the finance department and make sure that comes back to council with a budget revision.
Move to approve? Is there a second? I don't know if anyone has any questions. I think the United Way first was maybe suggesting, and then the uh, city and the county are each putting in five thousand dollars if we agree to this, and then um, many of the Hazel's House of Hope um, organizations uh, are each putting in uh, two thousand, so it's um, it's a number of people, and it would mean that when someone went to a bus stop on that complete route, uh, they would be able to ride the bus for free just on that route in order to be able to access um, access Hazel's House more easily without having to have fare.
Sounds like a great collaboration of partners coming together for the service.
Absolutely, and it, it services our our social services hub as well as a few, um, it will service the moving of the um, health right. It also goes out towards Valley. It also goes to the um, Walmart and the, the bus station in Westover where transfers can be made, so a lot of different access points.
So, ready to call the question?
Joe Bugon? Bill Kuecky?
Yes.
Ixia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Now we're on to fire and police pension fund annual reports.
Both police and fire pensions in accordance with state law. As a part of the state law requirements, the actuary retained by the, the pension oversight board reviews the funds each year and evaluates the assets available against the potential liabilities for the fund. Uh, Finance Director Kevin Tennant is here to present those annual findings to council this evening.
Please.
Good evening, council. As the city attorney said, this is the re, two reports required by the municipal uh, pensions oversight board. Um, part of that process is to present to council uh, the condition of the funds. Unfortunately, uh, this past year, uh, the year ended June thirtieth uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, was a, a poor year for the two pension plans, and well, all three of the city's pensions suffered major losses due to the, the poor market uh, performance. Um, excuse me. Uh, the next step in this process is to file a certification that you all have, have seen these reports, uh, and this will allow us to submit to the state and receive our state portion and get that deposited into the investment accounts. Uh, the police share of the, the state's funding is six hundred and forty-seven thousand, and the fire share is five hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Um, the majority of the data in the reports uh, was provided by our uh, investment consultant, uh, Greystone Consulting. I'd like to say that I put a lot of work into this, but really they provided the majority of, of the data that, that goes into it. Uh, if you're looking at the reports, it's broken out into three different pieces. Uh, the first part is uh, the progression of the fund for the year, the ins and the uh, outs, uh, and then the ending balance. Uh, the second part is the asset allocation, how the monies are invested and, and what types of investments. And then the third part is the membership and beneficiary accounts. Um, as part of your package, you received uh, what was going to be my presentation. Uh, so I'm not gonna stand up here and read the numbers to you. Um, but what I would like to call your attention to is the uh, loss on the uh, uh, change in fair market value. Uh, the policeman's pension, uh, the change in market value was a negative three point five million dollars. And then the fireman's was almost a negative three million dollars. Um, hit, hit hard uh, th- this past year. Uh, I think July had recovered some, uh, I'm not sure about August, but then I know September i- has been very bad, uh, again for investments a- as well. I think that's it. Uh, if you have any questions, I will do my best to try to answer them. Yes, ma'am.
So, what happens now is that like you said, you report this, that we have seen this back to the state, and then they provide you with an allocation?
Yeah, we have to uh, fund our portion. The city has to fund their portion first. Uh, and then once we do that, the state will send uh, their portion to us, and we can get it all deposited into the investment accounts.
And what happens to pension funds that have such lean years?
Um, the actuary reports, uh, one will be coming out this fall. It is actually based upon the preceding year, so we'll have a a better one, and then two years from now is, is when this really poor performance uh, will, will show up i- in that. Um, it, it will report that a uh, the unfunded liability uh, will grow uh, i- in two years from now. Last year was a great year. Uh, investments recovered from COVID a- and had huge gains, and they were just all lost th- this past year.
Alright. Thank you. Does anybody else have a question? Alright, we have received our report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At item, my understanding is that we do not vote on receiving it, we just receive it. And now we're to the city manager's report. Whoa. Oh, pardon me. Thank you. You've got an old copy. I do. It's alright. Consideration of approval of the report from the Ward and Boundary Commission. And uh, my understanding is that we do not have Sarah here, but we have another member of the Trumbull family. Um, who's willing to speak on behalf of the Ward and Boundary Commission. John Trumbull.
Good evening, council. Can everybody hear me okay? Um, I also will not read uh, verbatim the letter that you should have in your packets. Um, it is a short letter, but I still will not read it. Um, the gist is that we are compelled on the Ward and Boundary Commission to deliver a uh, report, uh, after consideration of adjustment of the wards and boundaries of the city of Morgantown every uh, even-numbered year. Um, we have met over the last few months with the city GIS analyst Marvin Davis, and considered um, new census and voter data uh, collected since the last time we made adjustments in uh, twenty twenty, right? And um, decided that while the numbers uh, across the board did increase, that they remained uh, within sufficient tolerance to not uh, make any adjustment to our boundaries at this time. Um, the letter that I previously referenced also contains a table of figures that explains these numbers, as well as a link to a story map that uh, Marvin Davis was kind enough to compile for us. That contains a bit more information about our process, some interactive maps, uh, the same numbers, and our process going forward. We will continue to meet as we collect new data. Uh, we have awesome toys that Marvin has provided for us, sandboxes where we can make on-the-fly adjustments to uh, census blocks and see how they change numbers. Um, so we will continue to do that um, throughout the remainder of our uh, terms, and uh, in preparation for the next uh, adjustment consideration. Uh, if anybody has any questions regarding these numbers or our process, I'd be happy to take those.
Does anyone have any questions? So, the gist of it is that the Warden Boundaries Commission has made a finding of uh, no change.
That's correct.
And so, um, we would be voting to accept, we'd be voting to accept that? Is that the best way to format it?
Uh, yes, mayor. By charter, when the report is submitted to council from the Ward Boundary Commission, city council will either approve the report, disapprove the report, or postpone consideration of the report to a future time, which would be not later than the first meeting in December. Uh, should council wish to approve the report, you would entertain a motion to approve and uh, vote tonight, and no further action would be required.
Is there, um, well, any kind of discussion, but also is there a motion um, to approve or disprove the report?
I would, I would move that we accept the Warden Boundary recommendation of no change.
So. So then we are, um, approving, we are approving the report.
We're voting to approve the report.
We're voting to approve the, there's an opportunity here to approve the report. Just so we're within the confines of what we are supposed to be, be voting on. So we're accepting it, and we are approving the report. So, um, does anybody have any discussion on the motion to a- approve the report?
I just have a comment that I just, I just find it interesting in the sixth ward that that ward has the lowest population but the highest voter registration.
I think that's mostly, um, like a lot of, sixth ward doesn't have a lot of students in it.
Well, that was gonna be my next point, would be probably fewer renters and fewer children.
I had the opportunity to sit in on several, if not most or all of the Warden Boundary Commission meetings, and I do think that they've kind of, um, at this point prioritized registered voters and making sure those are possibly as close as they can be. And due to some of our higher-density student areas, that does not always correlate to population, so what I heard during their last meeting was in the future, they may want a little bit of guidance from council on if they are to be uh, prioritizing the registered voters versus population. So maybe an item for discussion in the future, but I have seen them go back and forth and try to make little changes, and this is pretty good. I think that this is what we're gonna, what we're gonna get.
Um, so I have, I have one comment, and um, the, the practical value of the Warden Boundary Commission and of having wards, because we vote for our council people across um, the entire city, so everyone can vote for every council person. So, um, if you have it by registered voters, um, then you have enough registered voters in each ward that you can fill your um, boards and commissions. You can have um, a council person from each ward because there are enough registered voters there, or people who live there, um, people who live there and are uh, staying there in, on a long-term basis, enough that then you can kind of support our system, but it would be fair because everyone in all the wards, no matter what ward you're in, can vote for each council person, so um, the current kind of prioritization, because you have to prioritize one or the other, or it's just a mishmash. Um, I think in this situation is, is a wise choice, because everyone can vote for each, each um, each person in, I mean, uh, each candidate in their ward. So that's one person's view, but I can see doing it that way.
Uh, I will add to that, that a considerable amount of work went in, uh, particularly in twenty twenty, where we had a different tool than the one we were able to use this year. Um, to balance both of those numbers, and um, I don't like using the word impossible, um, but because of the way uh, population is distributed versus the way voters are distributed, when you move one, you move the other. And so, um, there was no balance towards zero, uh, where both numbers were flat. Um, and uh, we found that voter, registered voters tend to be a more stable number to work with uh, across the board, uh, just because of the way that it's distributed, so um, that was ultimately the choice that we made, and, and you're correct, mayor, that uh, city council is elected at large, uh, in that regard, so. Yes, we have.
Okay. Um, are we to the point where we should vote on whether to approve this work? Alright, could you please call the roll?
Joe Bugon?
Yes.
Bill Kuecky?
Yes.
Ixia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. The work is done for this year. Um, so, now we are to the city manager's report, and I'd like to report that our city manager and our assistant city manager are at the ICMA conference. And so we are gonna continue on to our report from uh, the city clerk.
Yes, mayor. So um, the clerk's office has been working with um, folks in our community to prepare for Municipal Government Week, which is October seventeenth through the twentieth. Um, Municipal Government Week is something that our state um, likes to showcase annually in October, and it's a time for our cities across the state to uh, engage our citizens about the work of municipal, municipal government, so um, quick uh, overview of what we have planned, because we want to make sure that folks are invited. Been working with Counselor Abu Ghanim to uh, do a mock city council meeting with some of our s- our students from Morgantown High. So we are working on that and hoping that it will be that week, but we will make sure that uh, folks are invited, so look for an invite from us as soon as we get the okay. Um, we will, are working with Eastwood Elementary to do a, if I were mayor for a day. And so we'll be bringing that to the mayor the, the week before, so that she can share with folks at our October eighteenth meeting, um, some of the responses that we have from uh, the students at Eastwood. Um, and uh, we are also working with the library to hold a Read Aloud, and we would love for city council to be there if you can. It's, it will be Monday, October seventeenth in the evening at our library, and we have some activities that we'll be doing with the, the kids, and um, And, um, just a, a few things that we're doing, quick overview, and just look for invites from me so that, uh, it'll show up on your calendar. Um, but other than that, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've assisted the engineering department with, uh, some review of the bid specifications for the city hall work that is funded by, uh, bonds approved by council. The opening for those bids is currently anticipated to be October fourth, and, uh, construction work should begin soon after. The White Park Voluntary Remediation Plan had been conditionally accepted by WVDEP and returned with comments. That has now been resubmitted to address those comments. They were mainly, uh, related to the map defining the boundary of the project area, which is solely city-owned property comprising White Park, and also the sampling that our consultant will need to do and to submit to DEP. So those have been addressed and resubmitted, uh, and progress continues. The, uh, the bridge design has been, uh, has been subject of a request for proposals that has been published. I believe all submissions have been received, and there's a committee that will evaluate those and do scoring and interviews for the, uh, engineering firms that may design that bridge for the, uh, south side Green Bag roadside trail. City staff is still working on the bid specifications for the trail construction itself, but also anticipate issuing those, uh, this fall. Council at its last meeting approved the Flegel Reservoir Recreation Agreement, um, and since then, the Utility Board and Bow Park have also approved that agreement at their meetings, which clears the way for the city to move forward with design for those recreational improvements that it had planned, and, uh, using the local fiscal relief funds provided by the American Rescue Plan Act to do so. Uh, and finally, uh, council has received a handful of exemption requests for, uh, vacant structures registration for this fiscal year, and, um, deferred those, uh, initial notice dates for future hearings. City administration has, I believe, scheduled hearings for October fourth for those, and notified the, it may just be three requesting parties of those dates. And that is all I have to report, Steve.
Thank you. Report from council members, and I was wondering if Councilor Abu Gonam would be willing to start?
Sure, I don't have too much to report on the first thing though. So October, the First Ward Neighborhood meeting usually is the last Monday of the month, or formerly was. But, um, we have moved that every three months, so the next meeting will not be until October. So if you're planning to attend this coming Monday, that's not gonna be happening. I was going to mention Arbor Day, but we had a wonderful presentation as it relates to the first, uh, nine AM at the farmer's market with the three different locations for planting with the tree board. And I'm going to stop there for the, until next time.
All right, thank you. Councilor Quaid?
Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending a number of block parties sponsored by the various neighborhood associations. It was just, um, amazing to see the neighborhood gathering together in, uh, just affirmation of community. Uh, I would encourage anybody listening to participate with those groups. It's a wonderful way of getting to know your neighbors. And it's, uh, an excellent way of, uh, just advocating for Morgantown and, and the qualities that it presents. And I would also encourage anybody who's interested to get out there and register to vote, please. Uh, that's an upcoming issue, and that makes a big difference, and your vote does count. So, with that, I end my report.
I have a couple of things. One, I first wanted to make a comment about the recent news regarding pride flags in Mon County schools. Um, and I just wanted to state that supporting a child is not a political movement. It is simply supporting a child, which is the job of the school systems. I'm so sorry to the students who have been made to feel less than, um, and this does not align with our city's values. I also wanted to give the opportunity to give folks information about the new abortion ban that has just passed in the city, because it's important to, that our community is educated. Um, and as a child, a bearing age woman with a uterus, this impacts me and many others in the city as well. So House Bill three oh two outlaws almost all abortions with narrow exceptions in cases of rape, incest, lethal fetal abnormalities, ectopic pregnancies, and medical emergencies, which is defined to apply only when an abortion is necessary to avert the patient's death or would delay or would cause a serious risk of substantial and irreversible physical impairment. There are no exceptions for the general health of the patient, patient, and the emergency exception explicitly does not apply to psychological or emotional conditions. This bill would only allow survivors of sexual assault to have an abortion if they, one, obtain an abortion within the first eight weeks of pregnancy, or two, and two, the patient reports the assault to law enforcement at least forty-eight hours before the abortion, and provides the, and provides that the police report, the doctor providing the abortion, which is incredibly narrowing, likely keeping the majority of survivors from being able to receive care. It also puts survivors' privacy and safety at risk while subjecting them to further trauma. On a lighter note, now that I have educated the public on that, today is National Voter Registration Day. Get yourself registered to vote. This next event that I'm going to mention is not necessarily in Morgantown, but it's important to a lot of our community members in Morgantown. But in Charleston, there will be an immigrant heritage festival where there will be resources and community for folks, um, of immigrant communities. If you want more information on that, please go to the ACLU of West Virginia's Facebook page and share that information for folks in our community that may be able to make it. On another note, the Paw Paw Festival will be this Saturday at the Core Abaritum from twelve to five PM. And there is an e-recycling event this Saturday from nine AM to one PM at Sam's Club, which is a great opportunity to get rid of any computers, um, video game equipment, or any other electronics that you want to safely get rid of. And that will end my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I have to follow it? She's so passionate today.
She did great.
I'm surprised that anyone was shocked to hear that you worked for Planned Parenthood in a previous meeting. Um, I was also going to mede- mention that it is National Voters Registration Day. So you can go to govotevw.com to view your voter registration status, make any updates, see things about the upcoming election. So very important, especially this year, to make sure that you are ready to vote when the time comes. Um, there will be an event at the farmer's market. It is the tenth anniversary of our farmer's market, and there will be a small celebration with the ringing of the farmer's market bell and some additional activities, uh, this Saturday, the twenty-fourth, when the farmer's market opens. That was a Main Street project. They worked very hard on getting the farmer's market pavilion, and they're very excited to celebrate its, its birthday or anniversary. Um, I have heard from a lot of constituents recently. I have heard from some in the, I've heard from some in the Woodburn area who are very upset with the tree crews, but I have heard from some in the Jerome Park area who are very pleased and had very nice things to say about, um, working with the, the tree cutting tru- tree cutting crew, and, um, some assistance that they were able to get on some very large trees. So it was very nice to hear some positives. He was very complimentary of staff and also of council, which is nice to hear these days. Uh, we've been hearing a lot of negative comments. Which brings me to, um, someone during the public portion spoke about concerns with the library. I have heard several of those personally. And I am nearly ashamed to say that during a meeting with city administration, the mayor, and the police chief last week, I expressed the same thing. That day, I had been to the library in the middle of the day and would not take my eight-year-old son with me. That's a very horrible place to be in, and I feel like the last month or two has really gotten out of hand. And I just wanted the public to know that the mayor and I have been meeting with administration and the police chief on ways that we can support him into, um, some stricter enforcement of some of our, our rules and laws and what kind of things we could do to help him moving forward. So we have ongoing meetings set up for that, and we'll, um, be hearing from Chief Powell again soon. And just a little, I guess, kind of personal aside to also follow up on things that Councilor Vega said. In my position with the city, I try very hard to keep my larger personal politics out of things, but I'm very disappointed in the school board's decision recently to make accepting children, making children feel welcome and accepted as our city says we want to be. That should not be a political decision, especially when we're dealing with youth who are already at higher risk of depression and suicidal tendencies and things like that. I, I'm very disappointed that it has been made into a political statement. So I, I do hope that they will think really hard about the message that their decision ends up sending.
Thank you. Councilor Harshbacher?
Yes, thank you. I would like to, again, point out too that the block parties that occurred this weekend were a lot of fun, and there was music at our city's botanical garden on Thursday. And it was just one of those weekends where it felt good to be part of the Morgantown community between our botanical garden, South Park had their block party Fridays, uh, Sixth Ward and South Hills had theirs on Sunday, and, and that, that was a lot of fun. I would also just like to, uh, piggyback on the deputy mayor's comments regarding, uh, the safety, the issues at the library. My, my wife was with some of our Afghan refugee women that we helped host at our amphitheater park on Saturday, and this was a little before noon, and there was quite a lot of active drug use, needles on the ground, and people passed out. And it was just, when I think about our amphitheater and what it can be, and what it has been, just to have that be the face of the amphitheater on a Saturday late morning was just really discouraging, and it's unfortunate, so I, I just wanted to point that out, but that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to clear up, uh, it would be, it's been in the press a couple times that this Thursday I was meeting with the county and Mecca and Andrea from Bon Vista. That is October sixth that we're meeting. I think, I think, uh, somebody might have misspoke about it being this Thursday, but it's October. Cause I'm out of town next week and Tom's out of town this week. Anyway, uh, just wanna clear that up. The, the only other thing I had to mention was, um, the United Way, uh, right now is currently looking for funding again this year for a warming shelter at, um, Hazel's House Hope in coordination with the Salvation Army. I don't know how much money we spent last year, but it might be worth looking into, uh, what we could do to fund it again this year. That's all I have.
A meeting with Jeanette next week. I think it's Catholic charities.
Yeah, they're doing the fiscal sponsorship, yes.
I have a letter that I forgot to read earlier. It's from a constituent in the fourth ward. And, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna paraphrase it a little bit because it's, um, it's quite long and detailed, but you will definitely get the gist of it. Uh, my name is Charlie Chico. I reside at eight oh nine Rivers, Riverview Drive here in Morgantown. My family's owned this property since the middle nineteen forties. I bought the home and property from my mother's estate in late nineteen eighty-six. This property is boundaries of Riverview Drive, University Avenue, and Eighth Street. And so this is, um, this is some of his discussion. Um, "In August, Damian Davis, uh, came to my home to discuss the replacement of a sidewalk along the western side of University Avenue between Riverview Drive and Eighth Street. A sidewalk runs along the side of my property. Mr. Davis sat in my home for about an hour or so. We talked about the new sidewalk, among other things. Mr. Davis repeatedly assured me that the new sidewalk would be placed in exactly the same place, but it would be one foot wider. He also promised and agreed to preserve the existing survey rods that were along the edge. Despite this, I've learned that on Sunday before the work was to start, um, there, there was a new set of construction drawings. The new drawings placed a sidewalk four feet closer to the street and raised it about eighteen inches higher than the existing sidewalk. Uh, in my opinion, this creates a fall hazard in my side yard. Um, as constructed, the dirt, uh, has covered my survey pins. The new sidewalk also has, uh, four to six inch high curbing that creates a trip hazard, um, that could cause, uh, injury for people walking. Because this is so close to my property, I'm concerned that it will become entangled in future litigation. I respectfully request that my pins be unearthed and protected, um, from ever being covered and that the overlapped dirt be removed. I welcome the mayor, which I plan to go over and talk to him, council members and city manager to my home to personally assess the safety risks. I hope we share a common interest and concern for the safety of people that use a new sidewalk, as well as protection of individual property rights and can solve the issues in a mutually acceptable manner." From Charlie Chico. He had asked it be read, and normally we don't, and I'm according him this, um, favor as someone from the fourth ward. And, let's see. I have a list. So, um, I also am concerned, um, with the pride flags at Morgantown High, and I understand that, um, the school board is taking, uh, comments. And so I'm, my comment would be that, uh, the pride frigs, flags in the classroom, are a signal that that area is a, is a, is a safe space, um, for those who identify with what the pride, um, flag symbolizes. And, uh, as such, it can make a student, uh, that hi- at a highly volatile time in their life know where they might find an ear or a friend or someone to talk to, um, in that particular classroom. And in that, in that, um, in that light, it doesn't seem to be political. And in a very political, um, environment, which we seem to find ourselves more and more rather than, um, uh, environment where camaraderie and, uh, safety are highlighted, um, I think it's important to find those safe places for people. And so, um, I, as one individual person from this community, think it's important that there be some indication of where someone can find, um, that safe space in their classroom, in their, in their, um, in their school environment. Uh, I'd like to congratulate MAP, uh, Morgantown area paddlers, uh, that they had their two-hundredth paddle, uh, last Sunday. I was not able to participate, even though I really wanted to, and I have a boat just ready to go, because we had a couple of neighborhood association picnics that I had previously committed to, uh, to going to, um, in Evansdale, they had steel drum bands, uh, band playing, um, which was wonderful, um, right on a city street, uh, that had been, um, closed a small portion of it, and because they don't have a park in that particular neighborhood. And, uh, then they had a potluck and the steel, steel drum band playing. So it was really, um, nice, um, nice moment for neighbors. And, uh, I'd like to re-mention that there are now rental facilities at the end of Walnut Street, Walnut Street Landing, right next to the Ruby Amphitheater. And for ten dollars an hour, you can rent, um, paddleboards, kayaks, and bicycles. This is a new, new thing in our town, and it would be very much appreciated that if you are interested, that you take advantage. Uh, and you can find out more of the details online, but it's generally open- Uh, and you can find out more of the details online, but it's generally open more on the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, uh, timetable. So, um, Adventure West Virginia is, uh, sponsoring this and it, the service is very much appreciated and it's in a city facility. So go for partnerships. Uh, I guess that's enough from me. And now we are headed toward some executive sessions. Someone want to read us into those?
I move the pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section six dash nine A four two nine to discuss the acquisition or development of real estate and West Virginia State Code Section six dash nine A four B two A to discuss personnel matters. And West Virginia State Code Section six dash nine A four B nine to discuss pending or potential litigation, but we move into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
All right.
Are we staying out here or we?